Ms. Carter Rule?
Mr. Fabiano?
Here.
Mr. Martucci?
Yeah.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Swoop?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
And Mr. Capiere?
Here. Ms. Powell, please lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the feet of the United States of America, do you feel proud for which we stand, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. Because we have so many students here tonight, we're going to take the meeting just quickly out of order and go ahead with delegates and visitors and then come right back to public comment. We have the WHS Drama Society today here this evening and we also want to congratulate Emma Carlton and present her with a citation for scoring 100 goals in lacrosse.
Okay, so we're going to start with Emma. So I'm going to read the first one. I'm not going to read every single drama one. And I'll have Ms. Kalinda come up to do the name. So, whereas Emma Carlton has scored 100 goals in our high school lacrosse career, Emma Carlton has had a strong positive impact on her peers and teammates throughout her play and her sportsmanship. Therefore be it resolved that the school committee of the town of Winthrop expresses its congratulations and best wishes and that it is voted made part of the official minutes of the Winthrop School Committee on May 21st, 2018. Yay, pretty good. Yes, so we will do make a motion to accept.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the citations for Emma Carlton for 100 goals and the WHS Drama Society for their state championship. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Perrin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. Next up is Drama Society, who I have had the pleasure of seeing, especially during the state finals. What an amazing presentation and show they had put on. It was very, very touching. It was the first one that I had ever been to and I literally had goosebumps watching you guys. I had the pleasure of seeing you guys do some of your warmups and some of your practices. Ms. Kalinda invited me in to see some of that. And then I got to go to watch our actual competition. My son sat at the very top of the theater on a skateboard. He was rocking the skateboard back and forth and I looked at how like super serious the coaches were that were there. They actually scared me a little bit, I'm not going to lie. And I was very fearful. I had my foot on the back of, on the front of the wheel so that he didn't send that little skateboard with his little 57-pound body all the way down to the front of the theater because I'm pretty sure those judges wouldn't have been too happy. They were very serious. So, I will read the citation. I'm going to have Ms. Kalinda come up but we're going to have you guys talk one at a time. So whereas, and I'll read each individual student's name as you come, has served with enthusiasm and school spirit as a member of the Winthrop High School Drama Society. And whereas each of you and your fellow classmates were named state champions. And whereas, you and your fellow classmates have had a role in the production and performance of Faustus and earned a state championship at the Massachusetts Education Theater Guild Competition along with four All-Star Company Awards. Resolved that the school committee of this town of Winthrop extended its sincerest gratitude and offer our best wishes for future endeavors and therefore be it voted and made part of the official minutes of the Winthrop School Committee on May 21st, 2018. And may I add that this is your second state championship, which is pretty cool. So now I'll have Mrs. Kalinda read your names so I don't mess them up and have an embarrassing moment. I'll call it done.
Okay. Ruwan Altvee. Josh Boudreaux. Crystal Campello. Connor Clark. Max Correa. Stella DiAlbakerky Montalvo. Jaren Diaz. Gianna Doherty. Jay Doer. Emily Donovan. Allison Earl. Olivia Festa. Carolyn Ford. Molly Gerard. Kat Grimes. Michaela Grimes. Isadora Hippolito. Samantha Long. Annalise Love. Fiona McPhail. Anthony Melchianda. Rhiannon Moline. Beth Nolan. Brenna Nolan. Jack Owen. Jared Owen. Ian Page. John Pelacelli. Julia Pimenta. Zara Powell. Rihanna Powers. Alex Ramirez. Izzy Regis. Mateo Alzate Rinco. Jonathan Russo. Kate Stackhouse. Max Stimson. Ethan Talent. Taja Thomas. Jackson Tolliver. Maria Tracy. Stephen Tracy. Kira Turner. Sam Zichella.
So to the point to note that a lot of our students are most likely on the field or perhaps involved in another activity tonight. So we'll make sure that they get them. We'd also like to give the same recognition to Ms. Kalinda. And also Mr. Steve Viera. And Mr. Nick Reponey, who I am sure is either driving a bus, looking for a bus, trying to find a bus driver, maybe changing a tire, but he's doing something bus-related, I can guarantee that. So we will get this to them. So I thank you very much. We're going to take probably a little bit of a break so that we can get you guys out of here and back to whatever activities that you have. And I'm not sure if anyone on the committee has anything they want to say before we let you guys go.
Congratulations.
Great work.
And we're back. Any public comments this evening? No public comment, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 7th, 2018, meeting.
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We do have some financial business this evening. We have warrant SVW 18-20 in the amount of $132,622.22. Payroll warrant SPW 18-21 in the amount of $683,520.38. And a budget transfer in the amount of $2,412.68. So I have a motion to approve all of the warrants, payroll warrants and transfers.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Fabiano to second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Perrin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We do have two buildings and grounds requests, one of which from the Do You Want to Dance Dance Resort and the WHS Girls Basketball Power Wash. The first event, the Dance Resort, is on Friday, June 6th and through Sunday, June 10th at the Neil Shapir Performance Arts Center. The second is Saturday, the 9th, at the ATC Driveway. Do we have a motion to approve both events?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Perrin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Martucci. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Subcommittee reports? Martucci? Do you have a plan of budget, subcommittee?
Do we have one? Or did we didn't have?
Ms. Howard, Superintendent's report.
So this evening, I'm going to keep my Superintendent's report a little bit short. Next meeting I will have a much more lengthy report, less delegates and visitors and less presentations. But what I would like to acknowledge and ask for from the committee, if we could take a moment of silence just to honor Nettie Arruzioni. My, Nettie was an employee for the Winthrop Public Schools for many years. She was secretary at the high school. Gave a lot of time. She was an energy. She was over 40 years of a cheerleading coach for our students. Nettie's services were yesterday and today. Both of her children are Winthrop High School graduates, both Christopher and Rachel. And the Arruzioni-Fuscillo-Jawoski family today put on a beautiful presentation for her and it was a nice memorial. So I'd like to ask the committee to make honor of Nettie in the memorial ceremony. And in honor of Nettie, that will be my Superintendent's report for this evening.
We also lost a member of the staff, Shirley Bloom of the Art Department. I had seen that recently. Just wanted to mention that as well. She was a phenomenal person.
She was a great art teacher.
Great art teacher.
Thank you.
Personnel?
So for personnel, we have no appointments this evening. We do have one resignation for one of our ESPs. Miss Dorian Gillis has given lots of years to the Winthrop Public Schools and is taking time now to, I believe, stay home with her grandchildren. So she's thrilled about that. Dorian has been a special education ESP and supported many, many of our children here in the Winthrop Public Schools. We will miss her dearly but we're happy that she is going on to do something that she enjoys. And then the next three people, four people, we could talk about the days and I believe at the teacher retirement party and the end of the year party, end of the year party, folks will plan to do that. But we have four retirements. Stephanie Vasslos, longtime speech and language pathologist here in the Winthrop Public Schools, has worked many years with our students, has gone through the transition from the old middle school to the combination of schools and back over now to the middle school and it's new defined state as a middle high school. Stephanie has many friends and colleagues here, administrators, ESPs, secretaries, parents, custodians, cafeteria workers. I think that everybody associated with Winthrop Public Schools would recognize who Stephanie was and still is. So we're thrilled that she is able to retire and enjoy her granddaughter during her retirement. We have Ms. Andrea Warmo, who has been a longtime sixth grade teacher at the Winthrop Middle School, part of a powerful team. As we did TV back in the early days, she was one of the first people to do that. I believe she's looking forward to her retirement so she can enjoy her summer vacations now, what will be sort of a good summer for her. We're hoping that both, she and Stephanie are able to still contribute, which I'm sure they will to the Winthrop Public Schools in some fashion. So we thank Andrea for her service. And on the third retirement, longtime friend, colleague, and just one amazing special education teacher, reading specialist. She was the first person to oversee the MGIHP, which is the Mass General Institute of Health Professions reading collaboration that we put together early on, back probably 25 years ago, where we took Mass General intern speech pathologists who were getting their reading certification and we provided a lab for them. Our students wear their lab. We go to bang for our buck out of that because we had some really solid reading instructors working with our kids and Judy was able to oversee that. So she, I think she's hemmed it hard a little bit about whether or not to retire. I told her, "Trust me, we will find something for you to do." Judy has a lot of talent and we'll be looking to her for guidance and support along the way. So congratulations to Judy. And then Rose Farina, after 30 years of teaching in the Winthrop Public Schools. She's planning on retiring at the end of this year. She has worked with hundreds and hundreds of families as a specialist, most recently as a computer teacher as well as a librarian. She's just one of the kindest, most easygoing, makes students feel good in a classroom, can really find that one student who needs a little extra support. And we will miss her as well but we're happy for her new venture of retirement. All four of our retirees, Stephanie Vasslos, Andrea Warmo, Judy McGee and Rose Farina, have all requested to receive their sick day buyout and I would recommend favorably on that.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci. Second by Ms. Swoop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And then for postings this evening, we have an additional kitchen worker posting. We have the Winthrop High School, Winthrop Middle School athletic trainer position, which would be for next school year. Summer school positions. We have one ELA teacher and one math teacher and that will be at the Winthrop Middle School. Mr. Crowley has put together a summer program that's pretty intense for our students and is offering that out once he has approval for the teachers to do so. That will be a self-funded summer program. Speech pathologist who take Ms. Stephanie Vasslos, take over for Ms. Stephanie Vasslos and that will be at the middle school. We have the need for crossing guards. We're trying to build our cadre of crossing guards. I'm not so sure a lot of people are signing up real quick so we decided to start postings now for the fall and we are hoping to recruit some people to do so. And then a math teacher at the Winthrop Middle School for the retirement of Ms. Andrea Warmo. And in terms of leave of absence at this time, we have none.
Moving on to new business, I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading of the social media policy.
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Swoop would like to make a brief curriculum presentation.
When I applied for the school committee vacancy earlier this year, I did so, and it's because my professional life has been spent in education. And I have a particular passion for public school education so that's certainly one of the reasons that I chose to put my hat on. And as this committee knows, I've been a professor in colleges as well as an administrator. And I've been here in Boston and I've been in other parts of the country. I became involved in Winthrop just because my grandchildren are here and one goes to Fort Banks and one is too young, is in preschool. But the thought of improving student learning and working with what I consider to be a really wonderful superintendent of schools, Lisa Howard, is truly a treat. So when I applied, I said I was interested in curriculum and I was interested in the quality of our delivery systems but also in the social and emotional life of our kids. Tonight I'd just like to focus a minute on curriculum and talk about some of my ideas. Superintendent Howard and I had had an opportunity to talk for actually three or four hours about this. So I'm really delighted to know that we're doing, I think, such a Yonah's job in this regard. So what's curriculum? In our committee, and we have a curriculum committee, we have oversight responsibilities. Clearly, the administration has a responsibility for making this happen and for developing the goals. So I have met not only with Ms. Howard, I have had an opportunity to meet with three of the four principals also in our schools. And I can tell you that they are very devoted to curriculum and interested in what's going on. But we as a committee have, well, curriculum has a shared responsibility. The school committee has oversight. The superintendent has a responsibility for developing goals and carrying out the curriculum and of course the principals and the teachers do too. So I think in terms of the oversight of the curriculum, curriculum, as you well know now, is often bought. It used to be that firms, we bought textbooks from firms. Now we buy curriculums from firms. So as a committee, in the past at least, this committee has looked at why we have selected what we've selected, whether it's a math curriculum or other curriculums, how much it costs. And I'm always interested, and I know Ms. Howard is too, what are the outcomes? And then how can we make continuous improvements so that we improve our kids' ability to learn? There's some really interesting work done at Stanford by a woman named Carol Dweck. And she's shown that one of the constant characteristics of kids that are successful are what she calls academic grit. I kind of like that word. It's like sticking with a task. It's accepting the challenge. It's parents and teachers praising kids for the process of learning, not so much as getting the right answer because really, if we're doing a good job learning, we're all making mistakes. And if we're pushing ourselves, we would definitely make mistakes. So she suggests that words like "not yet" work better than "no, you got it wrong, you got it wrong." One is to learn the process and to get it right. But the next step is, "Hmm, you're not quite there yet. Let's keep trying, not quite there yet." I love that idea. I spend a lot of time on homework and it seems to work pretty well. But it's not only true in the classroom where this works because you certainly see it on the athletic field and you certainly see it in drama because a coach on the side is often better than a sage on the stage and it just, it works well. So our kids are enthusiastic about learning new things. They're likely to succeed. If they're focused on getting the right and wrong answer, they're probably going to win. So if classroom curriculum is how and what we teach, then outcomes are what students actually learn. And we measure this in all sorts of ways and I know this is an issue. We've measured this on projects. We've measured this on tests, standardized and non-standardized portfolios, college acceptances. Our current measures are far from perfect. And there's been great controversy about standardized tests, as we all know. But one thing that standardized tests or testing has done is that at least we've been looking at what our educational outcomes should be and what we're teaching. So I think we're just in the early stages of figuring out how to measure this stuff. I think we can measure this stuff by solving real problems, you know, sending kids out on teams and solving real problems or developing strategies to keep kids on the task when something is really difficult. And I saw that in talking to the principals. That's one of their goals because that's a life lesson, you know? We all hit the wall sometime and it's good to just keep working at it. So I jotted down some overarching goals. These are, Superintendent Howard will be talking about all of this more and more, but these are just some of the goals I looked at. And I've looked at about, I don't know, maybe 20 schools in terms of their strategic plan and particularly in curriculum. And so these are some of the ideas that I gleaned from them there, from those as well as from my own experience. But it's looking for more of a challenge and it's not just in the curriculum. I mean, this emotional growth and appreciation for diversity and safety for all. I've seen that taught, safety for all at Fort Banks. I mean, I've seen it with my own eyes. So I know it's being thought about and these are all really kind of exciting times in terms of curriculum content. These are just the old ones. What's making this time in education even more exciting than ever is really the technology because it frees us from any particular time or place or space. And we're beginning to individualize curriculum, which is truly important. There's a statewide initiative called MAPLE. It's a Massachusetts personalized learning ed tech consortium. I have a long name. But it is addressing what, where, when and how students learn in order to individualize their needs, their interests and their skills. So when we pair this with competency-based learning and ensuring that every student masters that skill before they're going on to the next versus just testing it and not doing it, I think that's a very powerful position for us to be in. So it's, I think that curriculum is tremendously important as I know Superintendent Howard does. But for us to really work on this and work on it hard, we need expertise in the area of curriculum development and oversight to assist the superintendent and the principals and the teachers to maximize their efforts. So I'm hoping that we can reinstate the curriculum director coordinator. It doesn't, the title is something that I'm sure Superintendent Howard will come up with. But we need continuity between K and 12th grade. But this person could also help us write grants, something that no one person who's the superintendent can do in depth if she's going to survive here and actually see her children patient. So it would be comparable to running a business without head of operation. So it would be comparable to running a business without head of operation, and, or running a college without an academic vice president, and it just usually doesn't happen. So I know that that's, that's an issue and a concern, but I would strongly recommend that we try and find a way to fund the work that a curriculum director would do. Finally, the curriculum plan needs to be embedded in a strategic plan, which is also being worked on as we speak. I know that Superintendent Howard has talked to many, many parents and teachers and principals, and she has also looked at a lot of other strategic plans throughout Commonwealth, maybe others, I don't know, but this is going to be so important because it helps not only align our academic work, it really drives the curriculum decisions, it drives budget, it helps us to, to look at the outcomes and what's favorable and what's necessary for, for us to do, and what has priority, and then how we can make continuous improvements. So in closing, these are challenging and changing times. I think we're up for the task. I think we can be innovative. We only have 2,000 students, we're not running a regional, large, large place. So that kind of flexibility, and I know that money is tight, but I think we're ready for it, so I'm very optimistic. So thanks.
If I could just jump a little bit on what you had to say, I had no idea that that's sort of where you were going with your whole presentation, but I have to jump on the faculty of schools. The school district has allowed me to be part of, which is the new superintendent induction program, which is offered by MASSS, and they are training new superintendents, no matter what your background is, if this is the first time being a superintendent, there are challenges that you are not going to be aware of, the things that you haven't faced before, and it develops a group of people who have, are in a similar situation, who meet each other. However, it is like taking a major, we, doctoral course, probably one of the hardest courses I have ever taken, because of the challenges that they put before you through every meeting that you attend. So it's one time per month for a full day, and then my coach, superintendent coach comes here and watches me put into practice the things that I am learning in this larger group setting. Their schedule is ridiculous. You can't look at a phone, you can't look at your email, they have you scheduled, I feel like I'm in, you know, back in an elementary classroom where they tell you what to do every minute of the day, even when you can utilize the ladies room. The whole plan is to develop your entry plan, which I have developed and have told the committee for our next meeting to share with you, the things that I have found over the last ten months as I have gone through the process of interviewing well over 300 people, working with our staff, reviewing multiple, multiple, multiple documents, from teacher contracts to outside contracts to complaints to legal issues that we've had in the school. All of that comes together in a report of findings that I would provide to the school committee. In the meantime, since day one, we have been working to develop the Winter Public Schools' district strategy, which is a new term for the school district's strategic plan. And it is something that is developed not by one person sitting behind a desk, but by going through this year-long process of collecting information, working with key stakeholders, having what I would consider for myself some uncomfortable meetings with people where you sit down and have conversations with folks that you wouldn't otherwise have had. So they become these sort of key stakeholders in building the, the plan. So you figure out, what are the big rocks in the Winter Public Schools, and let's pick three, three things that we want to focus in on for three years, and we want to take them from beginning to end, and along the way, we want to be able to document how well we're doing and how much progress we've made. Where we're at with our growth mindset process is, when you say growth mindset, it's talking about using terms, just like Suzanne was using, using words like I can, and expectations being very high all the time by every person who's working within the school district. The entry plan itself has been completed by me, I have shared throughout the leadership team, one would be crazy not to share that information with them prior to my coming to the committee, so that they are aware of what, what themes have I seen within the school district that speak to the direction that we need to go. And now I'm taking them through the process of something called a SWOT. And anytime you stop bringing up, I'm not a label person, I, I don't like the acronyms, I can usually not remember them, but we're doing these things called SWOT analysis, which is kind of uncomfortable for people to sit in a room together, and I say, "Okay, together, we're going to figure out what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in the school district, and what does that mean?" And these are multiple meetings with principals, assistant principals, the leadership team, and they're also doing it within their building. And from those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, we come up with theories of action. So something like, if you had to pick something, our foreign language department is not diverse enough for our needs. That's a nice statement, but what are the facts that support that? So you go through multiple, multiple found themes, and you break them down into, okay, what is really going on within the school district? And by the data, what supports our need to take action on this one particular item? And so our goal is to pick the three of them, and once we finish a theory of action and prove what it is that we think, and have data to support the hypotheses, we then begin to develop three strategic objectives, what are the three big things we're going to work on? And then, over the summer, our schoolwork, so where we're at in the process is we're doing, we're completing Theory of Action this month, where we're looking at those themes and breaking them down into, so that we can, as a school district, pick three initiatives and stick to them. And everything we do, from top to bottom, has to focus in on those three things. That includes professional development, what we're teaching in the classroom, materials that we're buying, conversations we're having with parents. And then from those strategic objectives over the summer, we will sit down and come up with a step-by-step plan that will take us for a three-year timeframe through those objectives. Each year, those, the strategies and the focal points for each year will change, but the themes themselves for the most part will. And so at the end of that three years, you have now taken three big items, and you have all kinds of little items underneath them that will take you to complete the direction that you want it to go. The biggest piece of it that has to stay in everybody's mind is that it's all about the instructional form, it's all about the teachers, the students, and the curriculum. Everything we do has to continuously be circling through those things. How is this particular mode of instruction going to affect our students, and what is the outcome going to be? It is a really difficult concept to get, and I've been at this now for ten months, working with some really bright former superintendents from some large districts and small districts. It's been painful. You talked about the, you know, MAPLE, that's something that we've got deep into, there's some parts of it that I find a little too quirky for our district, but at the end of the day, we need to have a strategic plan for the school district. We can call it a district strategy, that's fine if we want to use that term, but we have to have a vision, we have to have things that, that we all agree upon. And then individual school improvement plans in their buildings can be a little bit different, but what they can't do is they can't collide with our own district-wide vision, district-wide core values, and district-wide themes that we're focusing on. Now, so you stole my thunder a little bit, that's my, part of my presentation for next week, but I think the importance of having, not additional people, I'm not about the number of people we have, I'm about the job description and what people are doing, and what the accountability is for that role. I am holding my principals accountable for doing this work within their building, the school committee should be holding me accountable to make sure that I'm doing these things, and trickle all the way down. What we are missing, as you mentioned, is a true executive director of curriculum and instruction and accountability, who has very specific tasks that include working with principals to hold teachers accountable and to provide teachers with the support that they need to drive those three themes. I couldn't justify the position without us going through this process of developing a strategic plan for the school district. If you don't have a district-wide strategy, you certainly don't need somebody to help you not have that. So I believe by the end of the school year, we would be well on our way to something that has the buy-in of everybody who's helping develop it. It's not something that I'm writing alone, because that really never works. People forget about it, they're not sure what you meant by it, these folks are developing it, and it's ground level up. Teachers have input, parent professionals have input, parents have input, but more importantly, we're working on it consistently. And I think when we, when we come out with a finished product, it will be something that we'll be proud of, that we'll be invested in, and every piece of paper we buy, every pencil we buy, every piece of curriculum we pick, every conversation we have with parents, every disciplinary action we may have to take with a staff member or a student has to, has to always come back to what do we believe in as Winter Public Schools, what is our vision, what are our core values, and where do we want to be in three years? If we can't answer those questions, I would be very disappointed because the amount of work that the staff has put into this. So thank you, I wasn't planning on talking about this, as you was talking, as you were talking, I was writing some notes down, but I'm glad that people understand where we're going and, and the work that's involved in it. And I'm super proud of my principals who have dealt with me day and day out pushing them. We're going to do another SWOT.
Really? Like, didn't we just do this?
But there's, there's plenty of work on, we just need to get a really strong focus so that we're not a little bit created a lot of things, and so that we're really focused and get some good work done with some data to support what we have. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. Great job, and thank you, Ms. Howard, for explanation. Any questions or comments? Public comment? I'd like to recognize Mr. Sackle, former member of this committee, thank you for attendance, and I'd like to thank you for your dedicated service to the town. Any, Mr. Matucci, public relations?
Fabiana? Yeah, just like to congratulate the seniors, this is our last meeting before graduation, so congratulations to all the seniors, and they're going to have a great week and a lot of excitement.
They were dismissed today, the end of the school day, at the end of the seniors', seniors' last day, and their behavior was spot on, and I'm going to do this, their behavior was spot on, I was holding my breath for the release of something, usually it was release of something, whether it's crickets, mice, I forget what we did my year, but I'm glad I forget.
Can I switch with one of them in life?
We did the Dixie cup.
So this is a great, I mean, every class is a great class, but this, this class is holding it together very well. Again, the whole knock on wood there, but thank you for mentioning.
I'd like to thank Mr. Matucci and Mr. Liederman for bringing in Newland Patriots play Mackeese Flowers to the high school about two weeks ago. That was a treat on a Friday afternoon, I know all about students, enjoyed that. Also like to thank everyone involved in our first track meet in over ten years, it was a beautiful event, and it was great that we honored the winningest coach of all time and the Winter Piss Three, Pat McGee. It was a great day.
I wanted to point out and congratulate the students, we have 140 students who took their AP tests, and collectively, they took 267 tests, so that meant some of them did more than once, and it's just, it's great that they have the opportunity, starting with sophomores this year, doing environmental science.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, ought to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and I also anticipate that we will adjourn from executive session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.